Okay, we are on the air. I would like to call this school committee business meeting from Monday, March 21st to quarter. This is Kennedy, can you call the roll please? I am here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mr. Call.
Here.
Thank you, what about me? Callahan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
Here.
Let it be noted that Chair recognizes Brian Callahan. Can we rise for the President's Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chair Hall, please.
We'll begin with public comment, can I see hands, people, for public comment? One. Okay, I'll just read our statement and then you can jump right up here, okay? The school committee invites members of the public to offer public comment, a welcome and important part of our work. Speakers are allowed up to two minutes per comments. Comments no longer than two minutes may be submitted to the district office in writing for inclusion into the minutes of the meeting. We expect and encourage civility, any remarks that are defamatory or abusive are always considered out of order, and the chairperson may terminate an individual's privilege of address on that basis. We ask all speakers to respect the following guidelines. Speakers may offer objective criticism of and/or ideas for school operations and programs on the agenda. Please refrain from complaints about specific school personnel or members of the school community. Finally, we request that no student names or any identifying information be offered as that would violate the student's right to privacy. Thank you. Okay, you're up, just state your name and address and you can jump right in.
My name is Anna Moll, I live at 15 Summit Place in Newport. I have two children in local schools. And I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Secure Storage Notification Resolution that's on the agenda for your discussion. A Harvard School of Public Health reports that around 80% of children who die by suicide with a firearm use a firearm belonging to a family member, usually a parent. About 2/3 of the firearms used in the case of study had been stored unlocked. According to the U.S. Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center, 75% of the time firearms used in mass shootings are obtained from the student's home, a relative's home, or a friend's home. And more than half of the time the firearms used in mass school shootings included in the study were not securely stored. Finally, Nationwide Children's Hospital in DC reports that more than 1,000 children die every year in accidental shootings within their home or in the home of a friend or relative using a firearm that was not securely stored. I know that our teachers, staff, and administrators work very hard to keep our students safe, and I'm very grateful for all that they do. I believe that schools have responsibility to help keep students safe and to keep families informed best practices that will ensure continued student safety. When my son's classrooms were visited by members of our local fire department, it was a good reminder to me and my husband that we needed to check our fire extinguishers, make sure we had a fire safety plan in place. When my older son learns about substance abuse prevention in wellness class, it's a good reminder to us to have conversations in our home about how to keep him safe. I believe that resolving to notify families of Massachusetts firearm storage laws and their responsibility to follow those laws is another way that our schools can help to keep children safe, and I hope that you'll support this resolution. Thank you for your time and your consideration of this important topic.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Did we have any other public comments this evening? Alright, seeing none, I'll move on to warrants. Mr. Callahan, do we have any warrants this evening?
We do, we have two warrants. Total $464,705.87. With the following named bills with the Newburyport Public Schools. Amounting the aggregate $464,705.87 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment, there are no conflicts.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All set? For warrants? Okay, so we have two sets of minutes this evening. The first one is the budget presentations from March 3rd. So we'll start with any corrections to those minutes? Anyone have corrections to offer?
At the very end of that, I forgot to write on the adjournment motion passed, so I will add that to the.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. I have a couple things while you just, I'll just jump in. On page one, there's a couple things under the heading Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Do you see where that is on page one?
Go ahead.
So, the mayor explained about a program, it's actually called Foundations. Like F-U-N, sort of a play on words, you can do F-U-N in caps.
Sorry.
And that's the name of the program, so, just a small thing. And then, Ms. Walker, same section, Ms. Walker had a question about, it was S or three, not Title III. I think that might be at the bottom of that section. Anyone else have anything from March 3rd?
I moved, we approved the minutes as amended.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's move on then to March 7th minutes. This was a regular business meeting, any corrections?
I had one correction on page six. It says, where it says Sheila Spalding asked why we have to increase it by that much. I actually asked, I suggested that we stagger it, the increase, the bus increase over two years. So cut the fee in half and stagger it.
Yes, you did. I remember that. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? I have another small one under the NHS College and Career Presentation. I'm not sure of the page number. That's okay. There was a reference to something called "on the spot" admission, it said sport, and it's spot. You can get admitted to the college on the spot.
Or you can leave both.
Flying fingers, that's all I can tell you. Thank you.
Okay, all set for corrections? Yes. Can I get a motion to approve? So moved. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, it's time for our NHS Student Representative Report.
Okay, so firstly, I want to say a big thank you to the High School Student Council for all the work they did to plan our Spirit Week last week, it was a really big success. Secondly, NHS would like to acknowledge Jasmine and Aya Al Fatib for coordinating a social skating event for our new students and their peer mentors. This took place on Saturday at the Graff Rank and everybody had a really good time. After a two-year hiatus due to COVID, the NHS Chapter of the German Honor Society is up and running again. 11 new members were inducted in January. At the first meeting in February, new officers were chosen and regularly scheduled meetings are now taking place. The National Art Honor Society also inducted 22 new members on Thursday, March 17th. The NHS senior art students had a reception for their work at the Newburyport Art Association on Sunday, March 20th. The work remains on exhibit until March 28th. The NHS freshman Cedar Schumacher participated in a concert with the Northeastern Senior District Jazz Ensemble on Sunday, and Caesar was the first chair trumpet player among mostly upperclassmen. The concert was a success in the music department as well as NHS as a whole, are super proud of Cedar's accomplishment. So, spring sport start at NHS today. And last week, the NOC held an MCAS practice test. The purpose of this test was to expose our students to a testing setting and begin to focus on their mindset on the MCAS importance for their academic performance and growth. It is a great data tool for us to continue to examine along with the array of other points we utilize to guide our instruction and target their learning needs. And then from the NOC, the NOC Rosado was a major success, they made front page news. And the NOC Student Leadership Council will continue to create opportunities for student voice and build student leaders. The NOC will be seeking students to serve as grade-level representatives on the NOC Student Leadership Council. This council will assist the NOC admin team on issues that will impact the students' experience. Topics will focus on cafeteria, recess, flex. Students will also have input on whether the new blacktop is repaved and how we can continue to build our student experience.
Great, thank you. Thank you both. Next up is Dr. Tom Abrams.
At all? At all?
At all? With a presentation on reimagining teaching and learning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank me, thank these young ladies because I always, I had to provide people with like jersey mics to get them out here and so they showed up, that's wonderful.
It worked.
Yeah, so tonight, we're gonna present our new class at Newburyport High School. And really, we titled it Reimagine Teaching, Learning, because we're always talking about that. And we really think that this class does that. So we're gonna talk a little about it, Sheila and Bruce have seen this presentation once. We added a couple links to make it a little fancier. So we're gonna tell you what it's all about, who's involved, what our goals are, et cetera. So this is the crew. This was pre, this was while we were still NASTA. And this was a publicity shot that we took for the newspaper. But that's essentially the students that we're working with, they're all seniors at Newburyport High School. So what this program does, what this class does, the purpose of this class is to really identify a vulnerable population of students in the Newburyport community. Students that might be prone to targeted violence, might be prone to a terrorist attack, might be prone to like a school shooting, might be prone to a hate crime. And really, our job is to provide protective factors so those things won't occur. We work with a national team, we work in collaboration with the Department of Homeland Security. We also work with the McCain Institute for International Leadership. And then we also work with a group called Adventure Partners. And in this class, it's really a hybrid of all kinds of different curricular areas. We do some statistics work, we do social psychology, we work with social media. These ladies are actually my marketing media team, so it's very appropriate that they're here tonight. We do reading, writing, marketing, and then very important is gonna be our collaboration. So we have 15 students, these students, they decided to take this class during their Clipper Block, so it's kind of in addition to their already heavy class load. Many of these students are high-performing students, multiple APs, jobs, et cetera. Once we came together as a group, they were broken into different subgroups. We had our data analysts, we had our marketers, and then our project teams. And then as we no longer needed our data analysis with such a heavy role, that team kind of worked with some of the other project teams. The way we started is we used various data points to identify that group of students who exhibited risk factors. So we essentially used two different data points. We used our asset survey, which is the survey that's administered yearly to our students, as well as Swiss referral data, which is our in-house disciplinary actions. And then using that data, we identified a group of students at risk for targeted violence. And then we were charged with coming up with a, some sort of a project to mitigate that, to give them protective factors so that something terrible doesn't happen. So some of the data that we used, and this data is right from the assets data, it's publicly available. And some of the stuff that we saw to get our targeted population, only 52% of students in this targeted population identified school as a caring environment. 7% had anorexic or bulimic behavior. 33% reported spending two hours or more alone during a school day. 15% had hit someone once or more in the past month. And then only 24% answered that extremely important when asked to value their value for getting to know another person. So that's a sampling of some of the data that we used for us to target a specific demographic. So, we designed a program, and the overarching name of this program is EPIC. It's Eight Promotes Interaction in Community. Again, our goal was to mitigate those targeted violence threat. And the way that we identified to do that would be through increasing empathy between and among students to understand someone else's perspective, to provide specific strategies to demonstrate that. A lot of time, we talk about empathy, 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 but what does that actually look like? We wanted to give students like, this is what it looks like. And then we wanted to bring disparate students together in a high-pressure, fun environment in which they have to work together and collaborate. And we're hoping through that, they'll collaborate, they'll bond, they'll communicate, and hopefully they'll get out of the thing we'll talk about in a second. So our two programs are called Listen to Learn and The Great Escape, it's our two-pronged tactic. So, Listen to Learn, this is our empathy campaign, and these young ladies here were really integral in implementing that. And what we did there is we first started off with a survey of students in 9th to 12th grade. And we asked them kind of three basic questions. What was a time in Newburyport that you felt like you weren't welcome? What are some hindrances to making Newburyport a more welcoming community? And finally, what did someone do specifically that made you feel welcome in Newburyport? So using that survey, which we've already collected, but we haven't really looked at the data yet, using that survey, we are going to develop placards to put around the school. And the placards will showcase a time when someone felt unwelcome. And then we're gonna offer strategies from the welcoming side so that students can say, I didn't feel welcome when no one welcomed me at a lunch table. And then next to that, we'll have three strategies, you know, how you can introduce yourself to someone, how you can make people feel more welcome. We're also working with the National Art Honor Society, who will illustrate those placards. That slogan is called "Listen to each other, learn from each other." And these young ladies have kind of started running the ball with that. They have Instagram account, Instagram account set up, which is trying to promote this. And they'll talk about that in a little bit when you guys have questions. And so there's the students creating the survey. And we talked about reimagining teaching and learning, because a lot of it is really about collaborating with each other. One group had the fine task of filling out requisition forms, and then seeing our school secretaries to kind of work with requisition forms, and then really figuring out what that looks like and why they can't like order from Amazon with a public school without going through a lot more hoops. So our second project, it's called The Great Escape, and this is our cooperation campaign. Essentially, we're building two escape rooms in Newburyport High School. And we're gonna bring our targeted population up, we're gonna group them in groups of five or six students who don't know each other. We're gonna lock them in that escape room, and, they're laughing, it's not scary. We're gonna lock them in that escape room, and they'll have to cooperate and solve clues to get out. They have a 15-minute timeline, and then if, hopefully, they do get out, Pam Keeley and the Food Services are gonna provide them with a lunch, so they can have lunch together as a group. Our idea there is that working together in that cooperative environment will get kids to know each other and hopefully, you know, bond a little bit and make themselves feel a little bit more welcome in the community. And their slogan for that is cooperate with each other, know each other. And what these young ladies will do in a little bit on the public media, they'll tell, they'll tell everybody to sign up for these Instagram accounts so they can get all these feeds. And this is the students that were sketching out the escape room. So part of it was sketching it out, ordering, coming up with the clues, finding space to work with, et cetera. And this is, this crew here, again, they're our marketing group, they have to design our marketing campaign, they have to come up with the slogans, they have to come up with our placards, our symbols, et cetera. So one of the aspects of this class to make it a little more 21st century is to really utilize social campaign as a lever for these kids, because we know how involved these kids are in social media. So with that, these students have developed an Instagram account. I really don't know what a lot of this stuff is, but they kind of do with these slogans and subslogans and hashtags. Silent Voices Stand Strong, The Great Escape, Newburyport Voices. Save the Island, the escape room is, you have to escape Plum Island because it's eroding, you have to get out before the ocean waves kill you all, something like that.
Nice.
We have to also assess the efficacy of these projects, we can't just say, yeah, our kids feel much better, and we're awesome. We have to actually show some way that they have had a change in mind. So we're using social media data tracking, number of followers, reports, retweets, et cetera. We're also using a pre and post survey of students engaged in the escape room. And then also, we're gonna hopefully look at a longitudinal study with the asset survey data. And that will be when these ladies are gone and the next crew hopefully is engaged in it. So, I think one of the beautiful things about this program is we were one of only 25 high schools in the country that were asked to partake in this. There are about 80 colleges that partake in this, so these students are really working on college-level stuff. That's just a little quote, we have selected you to represent the new U.S. Department of Homeland Security. So Anna and I had to actually do a kind of a, an interview to see if we qualified to present to the Department of Homeland Security. And this is video of us presenting to a worldwide forum of all these schools that are interested in this program. We were working with the Department of Homeland Security people. I mean, it was just so cool to have, you know, like anti-terrorist group from Colorado was there, School Safety Board in Maryland was there, and we were presenting to that national, international audience. Because of Anna's great performance here, she was actually asked to speak to the Maryland Center for School Safety. So during February vacation, she took one of her days to present to the Maryland Department of Center for School Safety, which is, you know, accolades to Anna here for doing that, taking the time out of her day. But it just shows that how important the work that we're doing is. And really, when it comes down to it, our goal is just to help kids. You know, we really want to make sure kids feel like they have protective factors, like they feel like they have a place, that they're welcomed, to make sure nothing happens, that would be a terrible tragedy. Whether it's some sort of a hate crime or something horrific like a school shooting. The students have been interviewed for the Newburyport Daily News, we've been in Wicked Local. These are a few quotes from some students that weren't here today that just talks about the importance of this program and kind of what they're taking away from it. And then really, we talked about reimagining teaching and learning, what are some of the skills these kids are learning? They're learning about negotiation when they're working in teams, they're working on collaboration. I already mentioned the beauty of filling out a requisition form and having it come back in different iterations to figure out what this thing looks like. And that sounds pretty boring, but they learned a lot from that. Prepping for newspaper, radio, and television interviews, communicating a cohesive message across multiple platforms. These groups all have to meet, and we have to make sure our message is the same and that we can share it with everybody. Meeting with authority figures. She's not here today, but Maddie Phelps had to meet with Ms. Keeley a couple times with the Food Services. Mrs. Keeley was just so, she just thinks that Maddie presented really well, worked together, collaborated, et cetera. Working with Mr. Wolf and presenting a budget. They had to do research, data analysis, writing across various social media, and then doing a lot of problem solving. So now, can they ask some questions? They don't want to hear me, I said that to you, they want to hear from you.
Do we have any questions for our presenters, our students, Ms. Walker?
Well, first of all, I just want to say, preceding that presentation, I already knew this, but the future is really bright. I'm so impressed that you guys would decide to do a project like this. For many of us, this is the most depressing thing, to think about doing something, working on something like this. And I love that it's so solution-oriented and you guys are willing to take a topic like this on. I would love to hear just your personal reasons for wanting to participate in this program, if you want to share that.
I promised them jersey mics, didn't I say that?
Not why they're here tonight.
I think initially, I was really interested in participating just because it was something so different than any class I took before. I think I've taken a lot of variety classes at Newburyport High School, but nothing that was so project-oriented and so real-world oriented, and it's opened a lot of opportunities, I've never done anything like this before. So that's why I wanted to initially take it.
Great.
Yeah, I agree, I've never done something where it was like this close to the community and kind of I could really see the effects like this, so I just thought it was a really cool opportunity.
I also agree, I think it's really interesting to take like a project-based class, which is something that I've never done before. And I also think it's really interesting to take like what you've learned and actually like apply it and use it to help your community. So I think that's just really important, it was a great opportunity.
And I just want to just give credit where it's due. So one of the reasons we got engaged in this program is really through Anna's dad, Dave. Dave is involved with the One World Strong Foundation.
Yes.
And he's the one that kind of set us up with Adventure Partners, et cetera, because it's very near and dear to his heart. So, I know Anna didn't want to give her dad credit, but he was definitely integral in bringing this to the school.
Thanks, thank you. Great, Mr. Menon?
Yeah, this would be for all four of you. Is this a one-off elective, or is this what we've learned here and how we've managed to put together the class? Is that gonna be able to be replicated?
Do you girls just mind if we just?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Hopefully, it's gonna be like a continuous thing, we hope to have it every year. I mean, we're all seniors, so this is our only year doing it. But I think Dr. Abrams is definitely interested in doing it every year.
Yeah, I think that we have the structure in place for it to be sustainable and perennial. I think one of the nice things about the new position where I'm in is that you kind of have a little more flexibility to work at different times, which I think has been wonderful. I think in the school, there's some buzz there where kids are gonna be interested in taking this course. If we can have, you know, the, you know, we would just need the support. They're doing it during their Clipper Block, that might be a different way to use Clipper Block. You know, maybe it becomes built into the curriculum, maybe it's also like the Model United Nations, which is more like an after-school piece. Again, also very product-oriented, which has been really phenomenal for kids. So I think we just have to think about what does it look like as we move forward.
One of the, one of the side benefits that I'd like to thank you for is getting Dr. Abrams back in the classroom. He's been jonesing ever since he left high school. I think that's great.
I try, I gotta get my, I weasel my way wherever I can.
Other questions? Okay, I have a question. I'm not sure where you're at with these projects, are they happening soon? Or like the Listen to Learn posters, are they up, or?
Well, they're not up yet, we're still, we just sent out the survey for the school and we're still trying to collect like anonymous stories. But as soon as we think we've collected them, we'll start turning them to art.
Great. So I was just curious about what feedback you're getting from the school community, but I don't know if it's a little premature.
It is a bit premature, so we just sent out the survey last Thursday, we're still looking at that data. So those placards should be coming out relatively soon. And we do have the escape room is for May 26th, 27th, 28th, right in that, that range. So that is a little bit more down the road.
Great. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank Dr. Abrams and our students, but it's really ties into that focus of a portrait of a graduate and the vision. And I want to thank the girls because you articulated exactly what we're trying to do. I think district-wide, taking the academics and making it more project-based. And what also is great about this project is the resources that we're working with, with Homeland Security and the McCain Institute to help guide us. And then really ties back to school safety. As Ms. Moltz, you know, talked about the Secure Gun Firearms Proclamation, it really just ties back to the work being generated by students to have more an inclusive, you know, school community where everyone feels they belong. And if someone doesn't feel like they belong, then, you know, put things into place to bring them into our community. So I just want to credit you all. You know, we're really just proud of you and Dr. Abrams and the work that you guys are doing.
And hopefully, in June, we get to take five students to DC if we win. And then if we win that, we can bring $5,000 back to the school system.
There you go.
Wow. Thanks for us, alright.
And then, Mr. Callahan, to your point, the real-world experience of coming to school committee, presenting on TV, they were very nervous to be up there, they did wonderful. So, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you need an extra person for the escape rooms, just.
Does sound fun. Okay. Next up, we, we have, we'll be having a vote to approve the resubmission of the Statement of Interest. This is for the science labs at the high school. It's a submission to the Massachusetts State Building Authority. I do need to begin by reading a statement, and then we can have a motion and get into a little discussion. Having convened in an open meeting on March 21st, 2022, prior to the SOI submission. Having convened in an open meeting on March 21st, 2022, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Newburyport Public Schools School Committee of Newburyport, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2022 for the Newburyport High School located at 241 High Street, Newburyport, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. A new roof will provide protection for the sections of the building where the leaks are occurring of Newburyport High School for the next, will provide protection for the next 25 to 30 years. This in turn will free up both manpower and financial resources that are now being used on roof-related issues to be allocated to other issues throughout the facility. A new roof would also likely provide an improved R-value for the roof, saving on energy costs. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The outdated facilities and limited lab spaces do not support the new Massachusetts science standards or our vision for exemplary STEM instruction and innovative learning experiences. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Newburyport Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Okay.
I move we adopt the letter as read.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I also want to mention we do have Mr. Burgholm in the audience. Should anyone have questions for him?
I do, actually.
Would you mind coming up, Mr. Burgholm? Thank you.
The SOI that we're submitting has the roof and the classrooms linked. Is there any, I don't know what the past practice of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, they won't approve part of it and not part of it? Is the whole thing or...
No, it's, they, you can't separate the roof project from the rest of it. They specifically say, they have two different programs. They have one program that is for roof, window, door replacement, HVAC upgrades, that sort of thing. That's called the Accelerated Repair Program. But the instructions in that program specifically say if you're planning on a future larger project in the same building, you should not apply to the Accelerated Repair Program.
Any other? Yes.
Well, I'd like to ask Principal Wolf a couple of questions, if he's willing. Sorry, Andy.
Oh, that's okay.
So I'd just like to hear a little bit more of like, for you, what does this project look like to you? Does this look like, you know, we're going to add, it sounds like two stories above our gym, right? And we already have science labs that are obsolete, so are we designing brand-new labs in those two floors, or, and what are we doing with the science labs we already have? I guess I'm kind of getting at, like, is this more about our new STEM program that we'd like to kind of institute here at Newburyport, or is this about, you know, we're busting from the seams and we could really use the extra classrooms or space type of...
So a big part of it really comes down to the delivery of the curriculum. So whereas right now, because of how the lab space is designed and the limited amount of labs, so teachers need to reserve the space in order to conduct an actual hands-on experiment where students are engaging in the scientific process. So in a lot of updated schools, the classroom and the lab are the same thing. So the teacher has kind of their lecture space for direct instruction that might take the first 10 or 15 minutes, then they go have the lab experience, then come back to debrief or do everything all right in the back area of the lab. So that's really the idea behind the rebuild is so that the science teachers, so when I was a science teacher, and initially I taught in a more traditional setting where you had your classroom, then you had to go reserve your space, and it's disruptive to the learning experience. And then when Salem High School had their rebuild, the classrooms became the labs, and it just makes such a significant difference in what a teacher is able to do and how they engage students in the learning, particularly when it comes down to the scientific process and really having them become more owners of designing the experiment or coming up with the, taking their hypothesis and testing it. So in terms of bursting at the seams, it's not so much that, it is more about our teachers being able to deliver a curriculum that's in line with the updated standards from Massachusetts and then nationally. Hopefully that gets at your...
Yeah, that's good. Yep, nope, thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, go ahead.
Steve, can I ask, if you were going to break the two things apart, though, even though I know that's not the direction we're looking at, like, how much would you envision like the roof project costing?
I think, we had estimated the roof cost at about $900,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Menon?
I have another question for Andy. Can these labs be designed or equipped in a way that expands the curriculum offerings that we have? Science has changed so much in 20 years, there's so much, so much more for students to learn or have the opportunity to learn. I just was wondering if we'll have that flexibility.
Oh, completely. So like, for example, our aquaponics lab is in a closet right now. So by having the expanded space, it allows us to expand those programs, and then the maker space. So just in terms of getting at, right now, the way our classroom setup is designed, especially in the STEM areas, in terms of giving students that opportunity to create and innovate, the spaces aren't designed for that. It's just, the building is a very traditional, when you think traditional school, the building is traditional school. But then with a lot of the work, you know, that now has been started with the strategic plan around the portrait of a graduate, this definitely takes us a huge step forward in making those things happen. And then with the work that we're starting to even explore in the basement with the Integrated Arts Program, just taking a walk in the, it's just not designed for creativity and innovation.
Use, we can turn the hydroponics lab into swimming pool, possibly?
Maybe. I mean, we are, I mean, we're looking at exciting things. Like, we want to be able to go, like, even with the aquaponics, we want to be able to move towards a farm-to-table program. So with some schools that have the actual spaces where, and then that involves all of our schools, because it would be high school kids then teaching middle school kids and elementary kids on their own farms that they would have around their buildings, but then with kind of the epitome being at the high school. And really building off of that, and us being able to grow food that they then are able to eat in the cafeteria. So those are the conversations we're starting to have. But obviously, spacing to do that, which is not necessarily tied to our enrollment, our enrollment right now is pretty good, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to kind of keep that fairly stable. But it really just comes down to making better use of the spaces that we have, and any type of an expansion to be able to do that will just make it that much better for our students and the future students that are coming up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any other questions, comments?
I have another question, if nobody else does. Steve, this one's for you. I think we talked a little bit about this last meeting, but like, what do you envision because we're working essentially on the gym area and above, and then whatever else we do, and what kind of disruption would that be if that project didn't get started on the rest of the school?
Well, you know, we try to do, you know, some of the most disruptive stuff over the summer. I would assume, and we're, you know, we're, at this point, even if we're accepted into the program in this next round, we're like three, four years out from even beginning So I would, I would assume that we would try to time it so that, you know, some of the most disruptive stuff happened over the summer, and we try to get through as much of that as possible, you know, before school came back or, you know, shortly after. But, you know, it's, it would be, you know, it's a big project, and it's definitely going to be some pain going through it. You know, it's going to take a lot of logistics, a lot of planning, you know, but we'll be working with a designer that does this kind of thing all the time. You know, the designers that work in these MSBA programs do a ton of schoolwork, so they've, you know, they've seen it before, so they'll help us through it. But, you know, and we just say too, that we, you know, we're talking about a two-story addition possibly over the gym and renovating some classrooms, but we're going to go through a feasibility study that's going to look at, you know, different options. And, you know, through that process, we might come up with something totally different that we haven't even thought of now. So, you know, we can speculate all we want right now, but we could be way off. You know, we might find a way to do something totally different that we haven't thought of yet.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Just confirming, Superintendent, this is our third time submitting this?
This would be the third, yes. This last process, we were in the mix, you know, and this is why we're kind of expediting this, because we found out a few weeks ago that our proposal was not accepted and we have to resubmit. But from the writing of what Steve has wrote, as I said before, with the need, I think on that tour with MSBA officials, they really see Newburyport as a, as a need. It's just there were some other districts that were ahead of us.
Did we get feedback from them about how to improve the application?
No, it was just, it was a lot of positive feedback on our program, on the tours, on the way Mr. Burgholm wrote the SOI. But it was just, you know, when you're looking at all the districts and the Commonwealth, there were, you know, some that got ahead of us. So I think we probably just missed the cut because we were pretty close this time, and they encouraged us to, you know, resubmit the proposal pretty much as is because they felt there was a strong proposal. And, you know, I also have experience in doing a multimillion-dollar renovation in my previous district, and as Mayor Redden said, there will be a lot of planning to make sure there's the least amount of disruption as you can during a renovation project, so. So I think we'll have a lot of time to plan a lot of those things out, especially in the summer months, is when a lot of the big construction usually happens, you know, while the students are out of school, so.
Ms. Walker?
I just comment on the motion and say that I think it makes sense, you know, given that it takes up to five years potentially for an actual construction to happen, and this does not bind us to anything at this point, it just gives us the option to do one very important repair, which is the roof, but also the potential very high-need project of the, of the science lab. So I think it's, to me, it's sort of a notebook brainer, we have the proposal ready to submit, and let's get ourselves on, on the docket if it's, if it's potential money that we could use towards this important project. But again, doesn't bind us or the city to anything specific in terms of funding.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Cole?
Thank you. I guess between the timelines that have been presented and also things that Mr. Wolf said about teachers becoming more able to deliver curriculum up to the standards or specs, is there something we can do between now and then? Because it would seem to me that if we don't make an effort to develop partnerships with, say, local healthcare, hospitals, chemistry labs, that maybe may be able to provide some more opportunity, more lab work for students. I think we're just, I mean, from what's being presented, it sounds like, you know, if we could do this next year, it'd be great, but three or four years, is that, how far is that going to put us back? And is there a way to maybe cultivate some partnerships locally? And even with some of the, you know, the community college or other institutions of higher learning?
And that's actually with the presentation that was two weeks ago that Aaron Smith was here for, so he's actually been actively been, and then the, all of the manufacturing companies, so that we're solidifying our partnerships with them, and he's made a great inroads with Anna Jakes as well, just really getting our students out, but in a very structured way. But then the other nice part is our teachers, because of some of the partnerships he's made, being able to have those connections and taking students out of the high school.
Great. No, I just think it's an important parallel initiative as we, you know, look toward being able to do the best we can that we need to do, so thank you.
And then we continue to make it work, so.
Great. Thanks for reiterating that.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? And just a refresher, it's a, the motion on the floor is simply to approve the resubmission of the Statement of Interest for the building project. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up is the school calendar. We have a draft in the packet. And this is just a first reading, so we will not be voting tonight, but it's an opportunity for any questions or comments who'd like to jump in. Mr. Callahan?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We do this every year, obviously. We finally put into policy that when we'll start before Labor Day, which is great, because that was always a meetings-long discussion, so I'm glad that we know upfront what that's going to be. So with this version, the only comments I have, Tuesday, November 1, that's always been the oddball, you know, from the days when kids voted in schools, or not kids, sorry, adults voted in kid's schools. But Election Day is actually the 8th of November, if there isn't even an election, is there even an election this year? So, but no one's going to be voting in schools. And then, one of the reasons given at one point was that some staff like to go out of district for PD. I don't know how many are doing it, if it's a large enough amount to warrant all the schools being shut half the day. But, so that's the one kind of oddball one I find. And then, the winter break, I know it, you know, it happens around Christmas, and that's really kind of where the dates start, but since the holiday falls on a Sunday this year, I guess I'm questioning why we have the Thursday, Friday off, other than it being fun to have that off. And could we have those days, meaning we get out two days earlier in June? Apologies to the ski families out there. So it was those, so it was the ER day on the Election Day, if it actually fell to the actual Election Day. The winter break length. And then again, it's been my thing the entire time, my opinion, which is unwavering, is that every ER day should fall on the Friday before a Monday holiday or a vacation week. And Superintendent Gallagher has definitely acquiesced in this, putting most of them on a Friday in the first place, which is great, thank you very much, Superintendent. But those are my opinions voiced.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The only concern I have about Election Day is making sure teachers have an opportunity to vote. So that, you know...
Yeah, I get it. I mean, people work till 5:00 and then, you know, vote. But yeah, so I just, it's an oddball one, and if it was, if it were to end up on the Tuesday, it would have to go to the 8th, that's all. If you kept it, it would have to move.
Well, if that's a, if it's an early release for PD, it's not a different length of day for teachers.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Oh, right, right. So, anyway.
So I have something. Right now, we have the planned last day on a Thursday, which leaves very little wiggle room for snow days. That would be my concern, especially now that we have that Monday holiday, Juneteenth. Let's say we have two snow days, which is pretty typical, then the last day of school becomes Tuesday, the 20th. So if there's any way to get creative and make it so that the last day is the Wednesday or even Tuesday, the 13th or 14th, I think that would be preferable, just so we're not bumping to the 20th. That feels a little painful, to be honest. So I like Mr. Callahan's suggestion that, you know, maybe we don't need to take off December 22nd, that Thursday, so... off December 22nd, that Thursday, so maybe that could be something to look at. And um, I don't, I don't, is there a requirement on the amount of PD that we offer, or is there some flexibility there?
Um, the early release time um is part of the negotiations, what we've been.
It is, okay. Um, all right, so that's, if that's, if there's no way to change that, then perhaps just um taking out that Thursday prior to the, to the um December break, so that we could have one extra day for snow days at the end.
Sure, I've got it.
Yeah, I mean, for prof, for, for professional development, there are um statutory required um trainings for teachers and the um, the development training that we do here. So I don't know whether um we're providing any of those statutory trainings um during, during those early release days, I, I don't know. I've always been a strong supporter of, of those days. Because I, they're not only used just for professional development, but they're also opportunities for um teachers to meet with each other uh and, and do common planning, so.
Any other comments?
Do you want to comment on that first, or?
I'll take it all in at the end.
Um, I just want to make sure everybody knows that, you know, um, especially with Ms. Ippolito's um informational um PD information that comes in our packets now, which is awesome, thank you very much for that. Um, none of my comments have anything to do with PD not being very important and necessary. It's just making it more convenient for families who all of a sudden have a half-day and all those things that I've talked about for going on five years now. So uh my one question though, I just realized this, with pre-K and K is always a week late or gets out early, starts later, gets out earlier in the year. Was that because it was half-day or people had to pay for it? Is that why it had always done that? And now that kindergarten is free full day, can that be, can that start the same day? Or do we not?
No, we don't. Typically, the kindergarten time on learning is 425 hours, so you have flexibility for them um to start a little bit later. And we kind of like to get, you know, the elementary students, grades one to three, enrolled. And then, as we all know, especially with our first child in kindergarten, it's a, they need a little, little more time when they do that drop-off. So um, once the system is running at the breast, it's really nice to have kindergarten and pre-K have their own day to start.
Okay, um, were there any other questions, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, just if you, in your comments, Superintendent, if you could just clarify why you have the two days um before the Christmas break, what the logic was there? Because I kind of agree that if those days could be reallocated.
So we, we.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to finish my comments, because you said you were going to answer them all at once. And then also just confirming that Juneteenth is a Massachusetts-recognized holiday, so I just want to make sure other people are aware of that.
All right. So the um, the 22nd, we reached out to other districts, so there are other districts that have that day, half-day, other districts are going to the 23rd and having the half-a-day on the 23rd. So um, that's easy for us to go back to revise, uh so we can push that uh back to that Wednesday. So I think that's easy. And I think just on the voting, uh traditionally, um, and Mr. Callahan is right, in the past there were other districts that had um that day off. And uh N Penn was that um a few years back where many districts would bring other teachers together. But I would recommend, I think that first just might just be a uh a clerical error in the sense that, so we can put that back on the 8th. And then you could probably vote for the parents that are listening about, you know, the vacation. So we know like we are going to stop before Labor Day, so that's something that we can definitely let the parents know at this time. And then I can just revise a couple of those uh dates that you all suggested, so. And what we try to do is take this similar calendar uh that we've had adopted that kind of worked when we were back full-time in school, as we all know, the pandemics kind of threw us off a little bit, um, and kind of go back to that. So that's, that's why that calendar looks a little bit similar.
Great, Mayor?
Sean, you want to just talk a little bit about the, the January 13th full-day PD day and just why that's important?
Yeah, so we had um, so what we have, and as Mr. Callahan alluded to, we've spent many uh, sometimes many meetings on the calendar, especially when I first got here. So we um have the teachers' first day back, and then what we really felt, especially uh for our teachers and, and with the students, we moved one of those full-day PD days um right in the beginning of the year. So the second day, the teachers are in school, and that's when they look at their class list, they can look at the 504s, they can look at the IPs, they can meet um as teams to really get ready for the students that they're going to have in front of them. So that's been very beneficial. The other full-day PD, what we really like, the January full-day, it allows us as a faculty, and Ms. Ippolito did a great job with a lot of the professional development, but it really allows us to get together as an entire district and really um do a lot of work, um, you know, with our professional development, with, you know, analyzing our data, um, having time for departments to really get together. So we felt keeping professional development, the second half of the year was really important. From speaking with a lot of my colleagues who are working with the unions and moved all their professional development to the summer with no professional development throughout the year, um, you know, they do get the professional development out of the way, but they don't have any time to really reconnect. And we felt having that January PD was beneficial, and it was great for us this year to really reconnect. We brought Michael Eitman in um in the beginning, if you, if you all remember the, the great PD that was sent out by Ms. Ippolito. But it's just for us, that second half of the year, we feel is a really nice time to kind of bring everybody together and uh refocus uh on different PDs that professional development or different issues that's going on in the district.
Great. Do we have any other questions or comments on the calendar?
Do the students have any questions, Superintendent?
What day is the first day of school?
First day of school?
It's um.
Is, let's see.
31st.
August 31st.
Last day of August, it's a Wednesday.
Wednesday. Yes.
Can I say it would be good too, and I don't know if we have this, but since we have kind of changed the policy so people know immediately because of where um Labor Day falls, when school would start, if we had that like in a bullet, like on the website? So, because I think that's the biggest question people have.
There have been a few questions about that.
If we were more after, which, you know.
Correct.
Five years ago, four years ago, that was a question, because we seem to vote on it individually every year, but since we're not doing that, it would be nice just to have that up there.
Yep. We can definitely put that up there.
So just tell me if I have this right, just so we can state it now. I believe if it's, if Labor Day falls on September 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, then we begin school after.
Correct.
If it falls on the 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, then we do it before.
Before, correct.
Okay, so that is a set voted-on policy, so that we don't have to haggle about it from year to year. I love that.
Also in the contract.
It's also in the teacher's contract.
All right, great. So I think we're set on this, we'll, we'll vote on the finalized version at the next meeting. Uh, so next up is school choice. Superintendent, do you want to give us a quick overview of the, this says school choice projections? It's page 44 in the packet, if you're looking at that.
Yep. We met with uh our principals and extended leadership team, and these are the grades um that we could open up school choice. Uh, so the Brezner hand uh grades one and two, um, we could open up 10 slots. And Mullen is full at this time. And then the NOK for grade six, uh 10 slots, seven, 10 slots, and grade eight, five slots. At the high school, we can open up 15 slots in grade nine, five slots, grade 10, and four slots in grade 11. And Mr. Wolf, we've done a great job as part of our, uh, I don't know if you remember the educatious uh program, exchange students. So right now, we have nine uh students coming in to the high school next year at grade 12, which we have enough uh space there too, so we're excited about that. So these are the projections that we feel comfortable uh with opening up slots. The other survey we did, and, and this is just something um that we put out to our uh employees um about school choice, and some districts um offer uh people that are working in the district for school choice, and I just kind of wanted to see what those numbers would be. And really, in Massachusetts, because we had a lot of people on our survey who live in Maine and New Hampshire, which I don't think they can choice in, um, because they're out of state, but the Massachusetts um employees, we had around, I want to say 25 um staff members that would be interested in school choice if it was opened up to uh employees. So not saying we're doing that tonight, but it's just something that I think would be interesting um for us to take a look at, you know, down the road. So uh, but right now for non-staff, um, these are the grades that we feel comfortable in, in opening up school choice in.
So I was going to ask that question tonight about employees.
Right.
Yeah, because I think we've kind of talked about that before in the past, because we had a couple people reach out. I think that would be great. I just think it'd be a nice benefit for, for teachers in the district, especially who don't live in a report, um, you know, to have their kids also go here. Uh, so I hope we do talk about that more and, and uh, and kind of go in that direction. High school too, I'm saying, this is probably conservative because we don't know who's going away to private school yet, right?
Correct.
If, if we do have some kids that decide to go outside district for private school.
And, and just for school community members, we, we can always revisit if all of a sudden, you know, we have 15 slots uh open in grade nine, and then Mr. Wolf, you know, as he's doing his enrollment, feels we could add more slots uh down the road. So we always have that ability to do that, uh depending on school choice numbers.
So for tonight, you just need our approval for the school choice projections?
Correct.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
A move, we approve the school choice projection submitted by the superintendent.
Second?
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. This is the most amount of choice openings we've had in a long time. I mean, I, I've been through years where there aren't any choice, where there haven't been any choice openings. Can you talk a little bit about why this is the year that we have all these openings?
Well, I think um with the additions of, especially at the breast, with some of our additions to the classrooms, right, and some of those teachers, like some of those grades are now moving up to the Mullen, that's why there's not um school choice open up for grades four or five. So we do have the ability to um add additional uh students to those uh grade levels. So grades one and grades 10. We're still under um our, you know, class sizes, so we're not, you know, 25, 26. We're still in the ballpark of 18 to 21 students uh with those numbers.
So it's really cohort-sensitive.
Correct.
Nice, Mr. Callahan?
Can you briefly explain the process, how the parents apply for a seat?
Yes, so once we um publicize our school choice openings, um then parents can submit a um request for school choice. Then we collect those for a certain amount of time. Uh, if we have more than, for example, if the high school has 15 slots and we have 25 students for 15 slots, then we do a lottery. So it's a witness lottery where we pull names out of the hat.
And where do they get that form to apply?
Um, I think they just, they can, it's online on our website, and in some cases they'll email uh Joanne Yell too about a request. It should be on our, our school choice should be on our website. As I'm looking at Ms. Frel on back there.
Did you do something bad?
You can come closer, you know, we're, we're friendly.
I think, yeah.
Just getting it on the website. Fantastic. Okay, were there any?
I think every half hour, you've moved closer to that wall, you're myself out the window.
Yeah. Ms. Balding?
Do we anticipate any more families coming to Newburyport?
Refugee families from Afghanistan?
I think um that's part of, you know, what, uh, work with Ms. Ippolito, that's part of, you know, what we're looking at. Some of the newcomers that are with us now may not uh stay, uh they may be moving to other districts, so we take all of that in consideration as we open up some of these
So this has wiggle room then?
We still have wiggle room.
Definitely have space, great.
Just a, a comment. You guys have done a great job managing the choice uh program. Um, I, you know, I know it has benefits to the kids, obviously, but it also has benefits to the district. Um, and you guys have done just a great job, and I'm, I'm delighted to see almost 70 openings that we can bring kids in. I think um, you know, it just, it, it, there are so many positives that come out of that, you know, more diversity, kids from different communities coming in, so more power to you.
Thanks.
Great. Any further questions, comments, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Uh, next, we have subcommittee updates, starting with Mr. Callahan, Finance?
Thank you. Um, we had our meeting on last Thursday, uh minutes have not been approved, but the primary um discussions were about um the capital improvement plan, um what items could be kind of pushed up in the list that goes to city council. And briefly about food service and supply chain issues and how there is no more free lunch, um COVID-related free lunch starting next year. People have to, normally would pay, would pay. But the reason that capital thing came up in the FinCom meeting was because the idea didn't strike me till after our last meeting. Steve gave his presentation, which is great, and I apologize.
He has to be here again, or do you leave already?
Um, so the idea, and it's page 42 in the packet, I believe, um, and Phil Little Hale created this spreadsheet, uh kind of shows it in a different view instead of just a, a series of pages with, you know, photographs and the description of the project. My idea was that, you know, we have several instances in, in school community where we have an up or down vote on something that we really have nothing to do with, and capital budget items is one of those things. So we kind of say, sure, district, you can ask the city council for money. And I was thinking that, it's just a thought, if they received several more, they'd, they'd get all the asks, but we kind of say, all right, well, for example, the tennis court renovations were already being paid for by the CPA, so city's not going to have to give any money for that. Um, or if there are other grants, or the NEF uh paying for feasibility study and so on. So, and then with like the one we just voted on tonight, um, it's not pie in the sky, but it's several years out, you know, so it's really no reason to dump it in there for city council along with all the other stuff they're going to be going through to go through. So I said, why don't we put a more focused thing of what you actually need within the next couple of years, um, and how much that is. And Steve Bergholm said that the number one thing would be the control system upgrades at the high school, um, and being the tech geek that I am, I totally agree with him on that. Uh, that's not something you want to have fail on you, otherwise nothing else works. So Phil Little Hale put the spreadsheet together um with the superintendent and Steve Bergholm, and this is, just like this, is going to go in the city council, is that correct? The six, um, top six, I guess, out of the 15 or so. And that was it. That's the reason the whole idea came up. I thought the city council would like to know that the school committee is somewhat more involved in like saying like, what do you actually need? Not what do you just want over a 10-year period? And that was my idea, so here we are. That was it.
Yep.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, thank you, I share. Um, I think it's a good idea. I would just ask though, I mean, we, the, the school department puts forward their list of capital improvements along with a number of other city departments, and I'm not sure that other city departments do this prioritization, do they?
They do. Not, not like that though, but it's more like urgent needs, like.
Okay.
You know, kind of like we do. I mean, it's the same form.
It, yeah, I mean, I, I'd support it as long as it's some.
I don't think we have to vote, actually, I think it's just, um, I'm in.
Well, I'm just commenting.
Thank you for your support, yeah.
But I would just say, I think, I think it's important that we're also trying to be as consistent as we can be with other department requests. So um, I think this is a helpful illustration, but um if we're not voting on it, then it's not actually school committee saying these are priorities.
Well, that's, that's the whole kind of thing, but if, it's in a packet, so.
So if you want to vote, I think you should ask for a vote.
All the city council watching right now, um, you know.
Well, I, I mean, this is department, this is the, the school department right now prioritizing, which is fine, but I, if we think it's important that school committee also votes to agree with this prioritizing. But I, if we think it's important that school committee also votes to agree with this prioritization, then maybe we consider a vote.
Um, I don't know. Can I just ask Bruce, typically, would you go through the CIP in in the education subcommittee with with the counselors?
Um, we talk about it, yeah. We talked about it last time and we'll be talking about it this time.
Okay.
That's tomorrow, right?
Yep.
How good.
Yep, yeah, we'll be discussing some of those items. We got some questions from the city council that we're gonna try to address around the capital improvement plan. Um, I I had a question, though. Um, I, has this been sort of dovetailed with the mass building grant? The SOI said that we're not gonna put in new controls on the roof of the high school and then have to tear them down. Okay. Just wanted to double check.
This is more of the software programming upgrades.
Great.
Uh, control uh, Steve did a nice job presenting um about the importance of that. So this isn't.
Yeah, this doesn't change our submissions. It's really just trying to highlight some priorities.
And we really categorized on the SOI uh approval, we kind of categorized, we took the building project. Some of those asks, kind of grouped them along with some of the other. So these were more like the ones that we felt.
Yeah, I remember Steve telling us that um some of the control systems we own are no longer being supported by the companies that wrote the software, so.
That could get tricky.
Yeah.
Mr. Callahan, was there anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, policy, Sheila?
Oh, yes, policy met March fourteenth and we discussed a revised wellness policy, which will be presented at the next school committee meeting for a first reading. Um, and we also discussed the MASC um advised updates to anti-discrimination policies. And this just made the, they were advising to make the language more inclusive of the protected groups. And we were, we noticed that we already had that inclusive language, so we are going to send the policies to our attorney to review, but we think we're we're all set as far as that goes. And then we also reviewed the dress code policy. Um, and we looked at the MASC version. And we also thought that that was a a better version because it was less specific and it allowed for each school to have their own version. So we are also sending that to the attorney to review and we will bring that to the school committee.
All right. Any questions?
Yes. Um, the first thing we discussed was an update to the wellness policy, which we will be bringing in April for a vote, for a first read.
Okay, any questions? I'll be back to you in a minute. Joint Ed, Mr. Menon?
Joint Ed is gonna be meeting tomorrow.
Are you sure we're meeting?
No, no, it's not tomorrow.
I don't have that on my calendar.
Yeah, no, I, it is next Tuesday. Boy, you know, I I scheduled a Zoom meeting for today that wasn't happening. It sent out all the invitations.
I wanna say April fifth. So I think we're meeting, we meet after our first meeting of the month. So.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's when we're meeting and again, we're gonna be working on some of the budget items and capital plan we're gonna be talking about. Might get some updates on learning loss or things like that.
Updates on what?
Learning loss.
Okay. Okay, great. Any questions? Okay, so Sheila, I'm gonna hand it back over to you for the secure gun storage resolution. This is a first reading.
Yes, this is the first reading and I I will read it. Um, this is the draft of the Newburyport Public Schools Secure Gun Storage Resolution. Newburyport Public School District is committed to empowering all students to become critical thinkers, problem solvers, creators and innovators who advocate for themselves, our community, our nation and our world. We value a safe, inclusive school climate where every student can be their best self. While we work on all areas of safety, this resolution has a particular focus on gun violence prevention through the leadership of the district, information sharing, empowerment and education of our school community. The Newburyport Public School District is aware of the statistics surrounding gun violence in the U.S. and the research that proves secure gun storage reduces firearm injuries among our youth. Whereas the U.S. Secret Service National Threat Assessment Center recommends the importance of appropriate storage of weapons because many school attackers used firearms acquired from their homes. Whereas keeping students, teachers and staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders at each of our school sites. Whereas across the country, lawmakers, community members and local leaders are working together to implement public awareness campaigns. Whereas state law requires adults to securely store their firearms. Whereas in order to continue with preventative measures to increase student and school safety, we must act now. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school committee and the superintendent will continue to work with local law enforcement and health agencies as well as nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes. Passed and adopted by the Newburyport School Committee on the twenty-first day of March two thousand twenty-two by the following vote.
Okay. So I I'd like to start by hearing from the superintendent about how you see this um put into practice and what we're already doing and what we might do in this area.
We reached out, I think it's part of um just awareness, um especially on our website. So we reached out to the district attorney's office and they have some, um, I think, materials and information uh that we can post on our website um regarding, you know, this uh resolution. Um, and then also I think it goes back to, you know, the students that presented tonight about um really just taking a look at overall school safety. Um, and, you know, as we're back in school, um, you know, this year is to, once again, um, to educate and to work with our community on school safety. I know Ms. Ipolito and working with Nemlec um has really upgraded our crisis uh prevention plans uh for the district that I'll be sharing with the marshal and also the fire chief. Um, and then gear some of our professional development time in the spring back to school safety. And this ties, I think, directly back to that um about gun safety. And then just really have the um education, um accurate education resources for parents um supported by the district attorney's office along with the Newbury Police Department, so.
Great. Any questions or comments? So this is just listed as a first reading, so I think we'll just leave it there and.
Actually, it's it's not a policy, so I don't think we have to have first and second readings. Yeah, it's a resolution, so I believe we can.
I'll leave that to you if you.
Make the motion.
It does say possible vote, so that's a motion. Does that, does, okay, go ahead.
I move that we adopt this resolution.
A second. All right, good. Don't give it to Julian.
So any, in light of that, now that we have a motion, any discussion?
I'll just make a comment that I think it's an important statement for us. Um, even if we as a, as individuals might believe that, uh, you know, safe gun storage is already something that is practiced. I think it's important for us to, as a body, um, communicate to our students and our families and our community at large that this is an important part of keeping our students safe. And when messages are received from a variety of different places about the potential threat of violence in our schools and elsewhere, I think it's important for us to take whatever measures within our means to just reinforce to families that um safety is very important to us in a variety of ways. Um, certainly as a school committee, we can't do everything, um, but we can certainly be collaborative. And and I think it says a lot that we make statements uh to the effect of how important this is to our community at large.
Excellent. All in favor? Well, I'm sorry. Sorry, Bruce.
No, I I uh I strongly support this resolution as well and I think it is entirely within the purview of the district office to be sending out those kinds of notifications, so I'm strong supporting this.
Okay, just to be clear, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, um, superintendent's report.
All right, I gotta, um, we have till eight, right, for the dollar?
And then what happens, right?
Oh, you're gonna use.
No, I have.
No stress, cuz we've got executive session.
I know. A brief um presentation, so just to kind of give some updates. I like the rug here, it's nice. All right. Let me just double check. All right, Ms. Ms. Frelong's getting the presentation ready. So we're, the presentation is really gonna cover a few areas. I think was really important, uh, receiving feedback from school committee from our uh budget forum last week. There was talk about the arts, so some of our slides are gonna address that. Well, also a lot of the work that we do, Mr. Uh Little Hale and our central office team continually to revise the budget. We have some good news as we kind of brought our budget ass with some retirements and grants along with some reallocating of resources down to three hundred thousand. These are all the previews to the presentation. Yes, I might not even need the slides now. There we go. But we also, do we have that little video? Yeah. Oh, do you have it embedded? Okay. We want to show this little video on some of the work that's already happening and I'm gonna touch base on um some of the slides. I hear it, you can see it though.
I like the soundtrack.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's not projected.
Yeah. I know.
It's on the computer.
It did work. It did work earlier. Oh, Machine is in the audience. Hello, Machine. How are you today?
Just go to displays.
Central Office wanted me to do a uh tap dance to that um before the presentation, so.
I would pay a buck to see that.
Yeah. All right, if we don't, if we don't have the video, Ms. Frelong, we can just.
This is my settings.
Oh, oh, really? Is it? Maybe I'll.
We could run the video after, we just kind of like deserve.
That's true.
So I I think we do have some new business, superintendent. If, would you like me to just jump to that? So you're not feeling on the spot here?
Perfect.
Um, any new business to share? Think, I don't know, are you prepared, Ms. Walker?
I can just give a quick update, yeah.
Great.
Um, so we, uh, following on the discussion, I think it was at our last meeting uh on transportation fees, bus bus transportation fees. At the suggestion of Vice Chair Hall, um, we formed a, I guess, sort of an ad hoc committee, uh, transportation committee. That includes myself and Mr. Callahan, uh, the superintendent, um assistant superintendent, uh, Mr. Little Hale and um Ms. Koch. So we are um exploring not just bus fees, but um also, you know, an overall transportation policy to bring back to the school committee for consideration related to, you know, what our goals are with our bus transportation, but also maybe broadening that to think about overall um transportation goals. Um, personally, I I would like this to to address biking and walking. But our initial meeting was just sort of laying out the organization of our meetings and um I think eventually we'll we'll lay out some goals um that we can bring back for the the full committee to consider or at least hear from us on. Um, our goal is to have a report back to the full school committee um by September, which would give time for the consideration on the bus fees um to be considered well in advance of actually assigning the bus fees for next year. Um, and we may also bring in um folks from other, for example, um Salter Transportation just to hear the sort of logistical part of things cuz there were questions about routing and, you know, things that they can really help um give us some information on and maybe potentially if there are other staff or other um related uh initiatives in the city that we wanna collaborate on or or hear more about. So like I said, we sort of had an initial sort of organizational meeting. We're gonna try to meet once a month between now and, um, like I said, September. If any members tonight have any particular issues they want us to consider, I'd be open to to hearing from you all.
Thank you, Julian. Um, yeah, I would, um, I I I'm assuming that at some point you'll take a look at public transportation that's available and and whether we can use some of that, so um that's, that was all I wanted to say. Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe, uh, Mr. Callahan suggested we could invite the MBRTA folks to to one of our meetings.
This is something you already know about that. Well, no, I was gonna say they're open. I mean, I'm having, already having conversations with them just about, you know, the service in the city. So I mean, I think that's a bigger conversation, but I think you can have that with them.
And I I would like to recommend that we survey the parents who drop their students off to see why they are choosing not to take bus transportation.
Do we still ask that question at the beginning of the year? We're gonna be a walker, rider, or busser?
Yes. We don't ask why.
A little insight, right? Um, are electric buses gonna be a part of the conversation? I know there's been some communications about potential funding sources.
And I don't know if that'll be, I think that's a, that's a definitely a topic we can talk more about as a committee, but I also think it's also something that the staff could could look into. The, um, Ms. Ettenborough from the city has has identified a grant and um there's maybe some option that she could, you know, collaborate with the staff in the schools to apply for that grant for potentially a um acquiring electric vehicle that we could use in different, different capacities. Um, potentially we could buy a full bus and lease it back to Salter. Those are some ideas that we're circulating. I don't know that the committee has to be the one to make that decision or recommendation. I think that the staff could also just decide to apply for that grant um with the mayor's support. So, um, so those are, yeah, so that was an idea that came up as well.
Thank you so much. Um, so it looks like you're up and running if you want to jump in and then I'll I'll make sure if there's any additional new business, we can get to that.
All right.
Ready for the tap dance?
Here's, here's a little video on some of the advancement, on some of the technology that we're making through the district. And this is a nice little podcasting uh studio that was created. Jackie Robesha did a great job, Russo, I'm sorry, did a great job on this. This is part of our NEF grant. So right now, um, all of our students are doing their morning announcements with the green screen. Um, the enthusiasm and the excitement of the students, they, you know, they're really loving this. And we're renovating that, we're gonna be renovating the library space. This is our, uh, another program where our elementary students can sign out. Uh, these little uh robots and they can code, so similar to in the library where you sign out a library book. They're signing out these little uh, little robots? Ozbots. And so as you can see, they have to develop the code in different colors. They can make them speed up, slow down, so it's, there's a lot of great things happening um within our school system. And really, you know, the buildings as, uh, Mr. Cole said earlier, the, some of the buildings are limiting some of these uh access, but our teachers and their innovation and bringing incorporating twenty-first century into the classroom happening every day. So we're just really excited and this is a little clip we showed at the NEF board meeting um that we're doing a lot of this work. So when, as I'm talking about some of the projects that we have moving forward, you'll see that. All right. The point is, yeah, perfect, awesome. So as part of our budget process, as I said, from March third, um, it's ongoing um budget process. So we continue to analyze our staffing patterns. And with that being said, it's retirements, it's looking at our programs. Um, we reallocate funds, especially in the operational program, and then we examine. And then we examine, we examine our operational budget. So we're looking at competitive grants, grant funding, and all of those types of things. And as you all recall, our, um, funding resources, grants, SR3, revolving account, circuit breaker, and choice. And then I think the other piece from our last meeting is just responding to feedback. So using this process, um, we said the allocation from the city was around 6.8%. We're reducing that cost to a 5.9, uh, increase. That doesn't sound good. I thought I had an idea. So the next, let's see. Awesome. Oh, I'll just keep going on. Yeah, oh, there we go. So this was the budget overview. I'm not going to go into a lot of details. You've already seen this slide a few times. You can see on the left side is the, um, the 6.8 allocation and a 3.9 increase. Our new with the revisions, the next slide will show some of the budget changes and revisions. So with the reduction of approximately $300,000, you know, through grants, through staffing patterns, through retirements, um, we're at the 5.9, and then the overall budget increased to a 3.1. So as we look at reimagining some of the strategic additions and updates since our last meeting, so part of this, if you recall, remember, we had a placeholder of $65,000 for an additional, potential additional kindergarten teacher. Ms. Appolito and Nancy Koch in the central office really did a, um, analysis of kindergarten, all the kindergarten students potentially coming into Newburyport. And so we know at this time that that staff, that increase in staff, we would not need. So with that being said, we listened to the arts. And so the idea here is really developing an FTE and a cultural arts, uh, program. So a specialist that does two things, I think, for us. Number one, it allows, um, more collaborative time for teachers. And what we're looking to do to expand this program is to develop this course that would have our students explore the world cultures through the arts, through music, through dance, through theater. What was really awesome about this is the work that we done at Portrait of a Graduate. So the idea here is, we all know, eventually our students are going to be graduating into this global economy. So we really start looking at some of the top GDP countries that these students eventually are going to be, uh, moving into. So, once they graduate. So really analyzing through culture, through the arts, and taking a look at some of these different countries. And what's great of with, um, Ms. Sokolowski as a Breznerian principal and her, uh, background in music and theater. She was, we were all, we're really excited about this opportunity. So really, it's taking that potential $65,000 additional kindergarten teacher and just, as we said, reallocating this and then developing a cultural arts teacher at the Breznerian. The next piece is, we had a lot of, um, discussion on the Mullen-Nark. So we kind of wanted to go through, uh, an idea of what we're doing with the Nolan-Mark-Nark music programs. So where, one of the goal is to increase our student participation in band orchestra and the choral programs. We're in this process now of, as I said before, developing partnerships with private lesson teachers to provide access for students after school. And then this is the work we're doing, uh, both at the high school and also the middle school, is looking at scheduled staffing to create increased opportunities during the day. So we've been connecting with high performing districts in Ipswich, Marlboro, Beverly, and Danvers. So that's the work that we're doing now, um, in anticipation and, uh, as part of our budget process next year of, uh, increasing, um, staffing to these great programs. The second piece that we want to touch upon is the innovation. As you saw through the video, uh, through Mullen and Nark, this podcasting, uh, program that we're going to be utilizing. And so basically, it's going to allow our students at the elementary level, grades four and five and at the middle school level, to really take their presentations and communication to a whole different level. Taking what they're learning in the class and then creating, uh, project-based learning and really upgrading our technology for them. And this is, as Mr. Wolf talked about, this has been a lot of work that we've been doing at the high school, creating a vision of an integrated arts program, reimagining the art spaces down in the basement area, and then expanding the technology, um, which includes new staff devices, iPad, iPad cards, updating photography equipment. And then really, the most important piece of this is the professional development, comprehensive professional development to redesign lessons, units, and courses and the overall NHS, uh, experience. Very similar to what the students presented here tonight with Dr. Abrams is a very project-based oriented curriculum that we're working on with our teachers now. And, yep, and the art providers, some of the art that's in here, some of those nice little pictures, so. Our one-to-one technology instruction. So as you all recall, before the new members came on board, I think in 2019, uh, Mr. Callahan will recall, we started to investigate, um, technology and visiting different school districts. And all of a sudden, the pandemic hit us for the past 20 months. But what we've done right now is part of our one-to-one NHS technology, um, movement here is phase one, we've been assessing the needs, developing a vision, and evaluate how to improve our infrastructure. So that's really, really important. Through some of the grant funding, we've been able to do that, especially with communications. Phase two, right now, we're in the process of investing in upgrading our teacher devices to enhance professional development. So if you all recall, once again, um, our vision of a graduate is, you know, innovation, creativity, having all of that. And that's the expectation for our students and for our teachers. But right now, we know our teachers, especially at the high school level, they don't have, you know, the devices that they can really do that. So that's kind of a, a big piece for us right now. Phase three is, right now, we're studying and working with other districts to look at a one-to-one, um, lease-to-own plan. And then kind of find out what's the best model to go with. And then going into the fall next year to start to communicate that with our families. Phase four, roll out a, a student lease-to-own program in the winter of next year. And then a phase three for the student devices, um, is to have a, a full one-to-one program at the high school, starting a year from September. But phase two, um, is really the critical aspect right now. Upgrade this, the teacher devices. But the most important piece is to provide the comprehensive professional development, so they're comfortable with reimagining their lessons. And our next slide, and this is the, kind of the last slide. And just working as, as we've been looking at all of our, um, presentations, you know, with 80% of our budget invested in the people, and really making sure every staff has the tools and skills to be effective members of our team. You know, as you all know, we're in negotiations with the NTA, uh, the, uh, IA and ASME unions. So we have over 430 employees within the Newburyport Public Schools. So one of the pieces that we're looking at, as we're talking about reallocating and, um, developing comprehensive central office, is to really look at variety, variety of areas and the possibility of increased need for a human resource director. So I think that's something that, as we're developing our budget, that we're kind of looking at, um, that and making sure that we can try to see if we can make that a cost-neutral position with someone, a point person. You know, we have a unbelievable staff in central office that I just feel is kind of, you know, overworked right now, especially with the high demand of, you know, right now having the biggest, um, department in the city with 430, uh, different, uh, employees. So that's something that we're looking at in reimagining our organization design and operations. We've already did some of that work in our last budget, where we did some real cost-neutral or, uh, cost savings. You know, with the restructuring of, uh, central office and some of our district positions. And we're kind of looking at taking that same approach with our central office right now. But, you know, we'll see where we wind up with that. But that's just kind of the overall budget update. I wanted to touch upon, um, the arts. I also wanted to touch upon technology and then also, uh, central office. And then once again, our budget continues. Step three is what we do on a daily basis. So by the April 6th, um, public hearing date, uh, we'll be a lot closer. Is it the 4th? It's, it's not 6th? I know. All right. The April, we'll just say the April budget hearing, uh, public hearing. We should be a lot closer, um, and with a lot more information for school committee. And that's, that's all I have, just a superintendent's update. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I appreciate this because I help, I think it helps provide some context for some of the budget asks, but also the things that you're working on that aren't necessarily directly related to budget asks, or maybe. And I think what might be helpful is when you present these in the full context of the budget presentation, assuming you would do that, is, is have a, a bullet point about the impact on the budget. Like if it's cost-neutral, you know, make that statement. And, um, I think generally, this is helpful. I think this is the question, kind of questions we're getting from city councilors is, how is the strategic plan informing this budget and how would it inform future budgets? So I think having this idea, these, these ideas laid out on a slide, but also, you know, relating to the budget itself and the impact would be helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Very excited to see the consideration related to the arts for the younger grades and the ongoing efforts in the upper grades to start to, um, incorporate more performing arts and, and, um, variety of arts in the schools. I would just say that the, I, I like the idea of providing more opportunities for outside, um, teachers, learning opportunities. But, um, uh, first thing that comes to mind is that's a huge cost on a, on an individual family. So if there's a way to do that in a partnership way, maybe we get, they are, maybe you're already thinking about this. But they, the outside teacher might use the school facility for a discounted rate for the student. Maybe those are things you're already considering, but thinking about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Menon.
Thank you. With, uh, Nark and Mullen video and podcasting, do you anticipate that some of the products from the students, excuse me, will be accessible by the greater community? Will you be working with Port Media and?
100%. So that's part of that. And the upgrades here with the podcasting, the YouTube channel. And then part of our upgrades to our website, we'll be able to share those videos, you know, with the public too. And we're developing this great partnership right now with our media hub right now. So they're part of that, those discussions. And what, what's really nice about that, Mr. Menon, is it ties in. So the students, uh, have that ability to podcast, to communicate in a variety of means. And now they're going to go up to the high school. And then once we redesign that integrated arts whole area, they're going to be able to continue that type of technology at the high school. So there's been a lot of collaboration between the Mullen Middle School and the high school.
Terrific.
Other questions?
I too appreciate, uh, the mention of the arts. I know we were just at the art honors induction ceremony and, you know, we, I think we both spoke of, of that. And really trying to find different ways to incorporate that into the budget. And, you know, again, asking the community to hold us accountable, uh, you know, again, for making arts a priority. So I appreciate seeing that. I had a question about the cultural arts, uh, at the Breznerian. I, you're talking about it as it's going to be another special. Is it going to replace a special or are you going to do an additional special? So would that be learning time that would go towards another, like prep period for the teachers?
It would be, as we develop that schedule, there would have some team time. So a lot of the data analysis that our, I would say our elementary teachers are doing a lot with very little time, which is amazing. But for us, I think it's a, I think a win for everybody because I really believe, um, tying that cultural arts teacher, it's just going to be, I mean, it's going to be a lot of fun for the students because that's where they'll be able to experience the music, dance, and they'll learn about very important cultures as part of the, the bigger world. So, um, we're really excited to develop what that's really going to look like. But Ms. Sokolowski was really excited about that opportunity.
The other question I had, so, so some of the things that we saw tonight, you know, obviously, we didn't see them last time. So did those replace some of the asks that some of the principals were making last time?
I think for this, the one, uh, the cultural teacher is, we were anticipating potentially needing, uh, another kindergarten teacher if we had a high volume. So Ms. Sokolowski, we kind of took that position that we had and then morphed it into the cultural arts teacher specialist.
So some of the other asks last time, and on most, you know, 90% of them were, were people. So, so, but those are still in there and.
Correct.
Those will be addressed when we get the full budget.
It's the full budget, the same, we didn't, we didn't deduct anything other than that kind of neutral cost shift at the Breznerian from an additional kindergarten to that cultural. But we didn't, we have not deducted anything that was presented to everybody.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, before I leave the podium, I do have a little presentation. I hope this, I hope this isn't my lunch. Oh.
That's the first time I've heard you say anything.
We found out, we have our daily news reporter. This is going to be her last, um, coverage, Heather. And she's been awesome for two years. Very fair and balanced reporter, covers the great, the great things as a reporter does. But also if there's some, you know, challenging stories, I think she's always done it with dignity, respect, and fairness. She's going on to bigger and better things and, um, and she's really excited about her new job. But, you know, we had our meeting, a week, bi-weekly meeting, and she let me know that she's going to be stepping down. And I just wanted, on our last meeting, to thank her for some great coverage and some very positive, uh, coverage for the Newburyport Public Schools. So come on up. Of course, I know. You know, everyone loves a T-shirt. So she's getting her official Clipper T-shirt and some flowers for, uh, for everything you've done for us. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Very nice. Uh, do we have any other new business? Anything else? Yeah, I kind of cut, I don't know if I cut you short.
You did not.
Okay, all right. So, um, we're going to wrap up the public portion of the meeting and move into an executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations, possible litigation and legal matters. And we will not reconvene in open session. So we'll need a roll call.
Let's move.
What do I need to do?
Nope, that's fine. Right. Second.
All right, sorry for that. First time doing it. Vice Chair Hall. Second by the mayor.
Mayor Reardon?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Good night, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.